Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Good evening, everyone, to the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting for February 25, 2025. The first thing is to call to the meeting to order, and second, please stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the Lord Jesus Christ, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Present.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Baffedare is absent with excuse. Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And next, we move to item four in the agenda for public appearances for non-agenda items, a new appointment. So we have a new appointment. Rachel Becker for the Library Board. The term expired in April 21, 2026, and is shortened due to the vacancy. So Rachel, are you here? No? So, I don't know, Wendy, do you want to say something about Rachel?
Sure. So she has library experience. She's currently a librarian at Madison College. So I think she'll be a good fit. Oh, there she is.
Okay. Rachel? Hi. Hi, can you tell us a little bit more about you and why you want to be in this commission?
Hi, yeah, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Rachel Becker, and I've been a resident of Pittsburgh for many, many years. I currently live here with my family. I've been a librarian most of my adult life. I currently work as a community college librarian. And as a professional librarian, I uphold the American Library Association Code of Ethics, where I'm super passionate about ensuring that everyone has access to the information that they need. And I'm especially interested in serving in this role because I'm looking for a way to get back to the community that has meant so much to me and kind of use my professional skills in a way that I hope will be beneficial to this community as well.
Okay, thank you. Any question, comment from the council?
I'll move approval of Rachel.
Second.
Any other question, comments? So all those in favor of approving Rachel Becker for the Library Board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So thank you very much. You have been approved. So thank you, Rachel, for your willingness to serve.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, so next, we move to the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda.
I'm sorry. Should the WPPA contract go to personnel also?
Where is that one?
It's C4.
When is the personnel meeting?
Personnel meets March 12.
And the council meeting is in March 11. So, we can't.
I would add that a member of the Personnel Committee was part of the negotiating team.
Okay.
As well as a member of the Finance Committee and the mayor.
Yeah, so.
Fair enough. It just seems like a labor contract should go to personnel.
Okay. So, yeah, but it's timing, Jay, okay? Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So, Gabriela.
Do you want to do it now? I'd like to move to amend the agenda to move the action on claim to now on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of moving action claims up to in the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So, so we, is Mary O'Connell, Mary, you're here, isn't it? Do you want to speak?
No.
Okay. So, and then, where is Chris, our city assessor? Chris, can you explain what is this?
Yes, good evening, everybody. So this is a, what's called a claim for recovery of unlawful tax. Essentially, what happened here is there was an error that was discovered after the kind of books had been closed on 2024. I think it had to do with the year built on the property, but resulted in a fairly significant value change. And so when something like this happens, there's essentially really two ways of doing it. One involves, like the taxpayers do in here, where you file a claim with the clerk. We work to get the claim amount correct from Misty, so that shall be good. The alternative would be to, essentially, you artificially lower the assessment value next year so that way her next year's tax bill would kind of be lower, and there's kind of a sort of a refund there. But anyways, this is a much easier way of handling it. It's a little cleaner. And, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Okay, any question?
Can you just clarify which of the two options you're recommending?
Yes, this would be the one that I would recommend. It's much, it keeps all assessed values the same. It just kind of, it's an easy refund to handle outside of the assessment process.
And it's a pure refund? It's not a reduction of the second payment?
Right, exactly. Well, that's, I guess that's maybe the other question. I'm not sure. So the way the law is written is you have to at least have paid your first installment, and I know that she's done that. I'm not, I haven't looked in the last, you know, few days to see if she paid the second installment. So that might be a better question for Misty or somebody in the Finance Department, but, yeah, I'm not sure of that. But, yes, this would be what I would recommend. It's what we did it last year, I think, on the VFW, if you remember that. And then additionally, there was another residential home that we did it on as well, so, yeah.
I have Jay and then Dave, okay? Jay, go ahead.
Misty, this is going to be a question for you. How does the, do we, as a result of doing this, do we pull money back from the other taxing jurisdictions?
So based on the dollar amount, it is eligible to be included as a potential chargeback. So in October, I will submit that as a request. If they approve it, I'll find out in November, the 25, and then we'll get the reimbursement in February. It's not an exact calculation, but it at least will be, some of that amount would be recovered from the others, yes.
Okay, Dave?
Question for you. Is this a, you know, a common mode error that we might have other ones? Have you assessed, you know, how this, how this happened? You know, do we need any, anything to, you know, prevent it in the future?
Sure, that's a good question. So this is one in a condo complex down on Prince Way, and it was just a clerical error. Somehow it happened on this one. I'm not sure how it hasn't been caught the last couple of years. Essentially, what had happened was is the property had taken out. I think it had started being built out in 2021. We have permit records from that time. We have notes from that time, but I think somebody just miskeyed it several years ago to say it was built in 2019. So the short answer to your question is no, we don't think there's any other glaring issues like this out there. That's something that we QC for pretty much every year. For whatever reason, this one just, it fell through the cracks. I'm not really sure how, but.
Thank you.
Any other question, comment? Jay, do you have another one? Okay.
No, well, it's not a question or comment. I just want to move approval of the claim.
Second.
Any other comments, question? Seeing none, all those in favor of the claim, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mary, for coming. Okay, so next, we move to the, what is, item six, Administrator Report.
Good evening, everyone. Start off with announcing that the mini food pantry that we had talked about, I think in one of the last administrators' report, is up and running at the library. That can be located on the first floor near the vending machines. You might be surprised to know that the ice rink at McKee is now closed for the season. I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. If you happen to drive on Greenway Cross near Coho intersection, you'll notice that the new traffic, temporary traffic circle has been put in place there. There is some signage and new yield signs that are up as well. So that'll be up for approximately six months as we assess its usefulness in reducing speed and minimizing or mitigating conflicts at that particular intersection. The Fire Department wanted to pass along that this week is Flood Safety Awareness Week. It's an opportunity for us to encourage all property owners to assess their risk of flooding and look for additional resources out at the Dane County Emergency Management website if they'd like to do that assessment on their own. I also want to remind everyone that the public reception for the fire chief candidates is taking place March 6 at Fire Department, Firehouse Number 1, 5791 Lacy Road. That'll be taking place from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Transportation is available through a donation, and you can contact our Human Resources Director, Sarah Olson, to request transportation. And Spanish interpretation will also be available at the event. You'll notice in the packet this evening that the sustainability plan has been part, is part of the consent agenda. That'll be going to the Resource Conservation Commission for their meeting on March 10. There will be a presentation by Phil Groupie, our sustainability specialist, as well as the consulting firm that helped draft the plan, Pale Blue Dot. It's an opportunity for folks to learn more about the plan, how it was developed, ask any questions, and participate in conversation on it. Phil and Representative from Pale Blue Dot will also be at Common Council on March 11 for a discussion only on the plan. And then any feedback that anyone has in regards to the plan should be shared with Phil no later than March 18. The plan will come back to Common Council for action on April 8. March 25 is the next, I'm sorry, it's not the next, but the second Common Council meeting in March. We are currently at quorum due to scheduled absences communicated already by a couple of Alders. So if anyone has a change in plans or otherwise is unable to make the meeting, the sooner you can let us know, it would be appreciated because we will need to cancel the meeting due to a lack of quorum. So please keep that in mind and reach out as soon as possible if you know you are, or you ultimately cannot make that particular meeting. Absentee ballots will begin hitting the mail March 11 for the April 1 general election. In-person absentee voting will take place in the Fitchburg Room of the Community Center from March 18 to March 28. And then finally, I do want to thank Tracy, the rest of the city staff, and the poll workers for your efforts on the February primary. I know I'm already talking about an April 1 general election, but thank you for your efforts last week on the primary. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any question for Charles? Comments? No? Okay, so we move to the Mayor's Report. So regarding the fire chief public reception, Sarah sent us an email to all of us so we can share with our social media. So try to do that so we can, you can invite your constituents. It's important that we, you know, we get a lot of people in that public reception. So, and the only thing that you have to do is copy and paste and post, you know? Everything is done. So please, I will ask for your support. Also, I want to congratulate five new organization and company awarded the Bicycle Friendly Business in Fitchburg in the bronze category, Irish Field Apartment, Me and Julio Restaurant, Real Rusty B, Cocktail Lounge, and Sammy Credit Union, and the goal is the Memorial United Church of Christ. So there's going to be a media event and presentation of the award on May 16 here at a city hall in one of our council meeting at 7:30. So everyone is invited. The other thing I want to ask is that we discussed about the, you know, changing the time of our council meeting and the committee of the hall. So we sent, Adam sent you a survey, and a couple of you answered. Couple, I would say, four, including myself. So we decided that we are planning to move the council meeting starting at 6:30 PM. Okay? This is the feedback that we collect with the people that answered the survey, and the council meeting at 6:30. Starting one, Charles?
Well, we'll need to do ordinance updates for council to actually approve that change.
Yeah, okay, but this is the idea.
But that's where the survey responses landed that we did receive.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Yes. So that's going to have implications for the Finance Committee and maybe also Public Safety?
No, we already.
So, yes, we would need to move Finance to 5:30 would be the plan. Public Safety would be at 6:00 PM. We have communicated with Fact TV. They are capable of handling those changes if approved ultimately by the Common Council.
Okay, but this is coming, okay? Okay. Second, Lisa will send you emails to the Alders so, because I want to have a meeting with the representative of, you know, the district Alders before the CIP. So, because I wanted to know what are your plans for the CIP? Do you have any plans or project that you want to implement in your district? So Lisa will send you an email so you can please, you know, schedule a meeting with me by the end of April. I think by the second week of April, we are going to have those meetings. So I appreciate your collaboration and participation. As you know, the police union rectified the contracts, so this is great. We have one union contract done. It's going to come to council for approval March 11. The other thing I want to, to mention about the sustainability plan, and Chad already mentioned, it's going to come to council on March 11 for questions. So I will recommend that you watch the RCC meeting or you go to the meeting for the presentation because Phil is going to come to March 11 to answer some of our questions, okay? So I will appreciate that you review that sustainability plan in advance. What else? The other thing that, you know, as, you know, we have been discussing about other alternative source of revenue since the referendum failed. The council have been discussing alternative sources like a streetlight fee or the vehicle registration fee. In the last month, in the last committee of the hall, the council had the opportunity to discuss these alternative source of revenue. And according to the feedback I collect, gathered for the meeting, I directed staff to start working in a resolution to move forward with a vehicle registration fee that is going to come to council in the next.
We anticipate a referral on March 11 with action April 8.
April 8, okay? So you have any question about that? Please contact me. What else? And that's it for now. Okay, any question for me, comments? No? Okay. So next, we move to Commission and Committee reports, and we are going to start with Plan Commission.
Just a moment, will I pull this up? I'll move to postpone ordinance, sorry. Is it a rezone? Sorry, it's always different in the plan in the council packet. I'll move to postpone rezone RZ 258325 to the second March meeting.
Second.
This is, we did not approve the PDD as is. We had some discussion and are wanting to see changes. So we're asking them to come back with some updated plans come next meeting. So not recommending the council vote on it at this time.
Okay, Jay, do you have a question?
Yeah, can you briefly summarize the things Plan Commission was not happy about?
The primary concern was the lack of green space within the development, especially considering that the parks are, all parks are several blocks away. Very, very narrow lots, especially in particular for the single-family homes. They think that they can redesign to make more green space, but that has yet to be seen, so.
Well, before I knew this was going to be postponed, I was going to ask a question of Deanna about the size of the retention pond, which appears to have grown quite a lot since the last drawing we saw.
Well, we are postponing so we can discuss that.
Is that what's impacting the green space issue?
I believe so. They think they can move it to the, closer to the lot line, is what my understanding is.
Okay. Who's second is?
I did.
Okay, Jay, second. Okay. All those in favor of postponing this rezon to March 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 4825, approving certified survey map request CS 257925 by Jeff Meyer, agent for William Ryan Homes, Wisconsin, Inc., to obtain approval to subdivide the existing lot into one lot and one outlot on property associated with 5944 Astor Drive.
Second.
Is Plan Commission approved?
Plan approved.
Okay, what is this, Gabriela?
This is basically, it's a large lot. They want to formally create, there is already a home on this lot. They want to formally create this specific piece of the lot so the house can sell. The outlot is really a stormwater facility. It cannot be built on because it's, because it's an outlot, but we're separating this away so that the home can be sold.
Okay, any question, comments?
Do we, do we know why, why it wasn't separated when this was originally platted?
I think there was a model house, but I don't know. Deanna, do you know that?
Yeah, it is my understanding that this was originally slated to be a model home.
Yeah.
And so now they're just getting ready to sell.
I see.
Any other question, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution R-49-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 4925, approving certified survey map request CS 25ED25 by Brad McLean, agent for University of Wisconsin Credit Union, to obtain approval to consolidate one existing lot and one existing outlot into one new lot on property located at 2885 Fish Hatchery Road.
Second.
Is Plan Commission approved?
Plan approved. This is actually something that we approved last year, but it expires after a year, so they have to come back again. This is a parcel along with Chala Drive that Fitchburg sold to UW Credit Union so they could change the traffic pattern so that the traffic going through the drive-through ends up on Ochala Drive so that people can use the Signalize intersection to get back onto Fish Hatchery Road. They're already working on, or maybe have already completed the work, but they just need to get this finished.
Okay, any question, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution R-49-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
And I have a couple of things, other updates.
Yes, okay.
We did a conditional use for Four Winds Farm. They're building an auxiliary building, which will be for bride and groom spaces and a heated garage area. This is primarily an event venue. It's really beautiful, and they're doing well, so they need more space. We also approved a conditional use, oh, I'm sorry, we postponed a conditional use, so that's, skip that. We approved an ADR for the Jamestown Chick-fil-A off of McKee near Fitchrona. The construction, FYI, the construction is anticipated to start around fall 2025 for a potential opening in 2026. We also approved an, oh, sorry, postponed the ADR for the Jamestown Crew Car Wash in the same area, but that's postponed. The neighborhood plans continue. We'll see a resolution to put more money towards MSA today to continue the plans, but the draft plans are in the works, and there will be more, a steering committee meeting for each one coming soon. And the RFP for the comp plan and zoning plan, zoning code update is in the works, not complete yet. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any question for Gabriela? No? Okay. So next, we move to the Board of Public Works. Dave?
Move a Resolution R 3725, acceptance of Fish Hatchery Road water main replacement bids.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Finance?
Finance approved.
Thank you. What is this?
So we have a 10-inch water main under Fish Hatchery Road, basically under the Nine Springs Creek. This was installed in 1969, best Tim's records can tell. 2023, a break developed in it. It was valved off at each end. And we now will, we are planning to place it, there's two manholes, and they'll be doing directional boring to install replacement 10-inch diameter water main. We need this for fire protection and water service. Note the total, total for this is, it's a big one, 328, a little over 328,000 for this work. The question was asked, you know, should we have replaced this when we did Fish Hatchery Road? I think it was down, you know, where it was, we didn't think it was an issue. I guess hindsight's 2020, but that's what, that's what this is about. I believe the existing was either cast iron or ductile iron. Maybe Tim can weigh in on that.
Tim?
It's an existing ductile iron pipe.
So when are we planning to repair this?
Shortly after. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Tim.
It'd be spring, as soon as the weather turns.
So we need to close one of the lines there on Fish Hatchery?
Yeah, it'd be a, it'd be a lane closure, not a road closure, so they'd close the lanes.
And how long is it going to take to fix this? A couple of days, weeks?
It'd be several weeks.
Oh. Okay.
You know, directional boring, you know, from, you know, we have a relatively small manhole that we have to get in, and it's just, it's a little bit complicated work to do it right.
Any other question, comments? Jay?
Well, I'm also looking at the cross-section of this, and it looks like it's not a straight pipe. It looks like it dips down under the creek. So I didn't, I wasn't aware that directional boring you could do on curves.
Yes, you do want a curve because you'll have an entry pit where it has to curve down, and then you come back up into the exit pit. So all horizontal directional drills have that shape.
How far below the creek is this pipe?
It looks like the depth from the cross-section elevation, the bottom of the pipe is about 856, 57. And the creek, it's not shown on here, though. Let's see.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering.
So the box culvert inverts, looks like it is at an elevation 863. So if your top of pipe is eight, about 858, so you're about... so you're about six feet underneath the, the creek, it looks like.
All right.
Yeah, in the drawing, it does say six feet minimum between the top of the pipe and the bottom of the box culvert.
So the old pipe, we're just going to leave there? Do we fill that with something?
It will be grounded.
Okay. Any other question? Nope. Okay, so all those in favor of Resolution R dash 37 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
And you post, the motion carries. So, next one.
Next, I'll move approval of Resolution R 3825, amending 2024 general fund budget, streetlight repairs and city hall utilities.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did the Finance Committee?
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this, Dave?
So we have seen, you know, two, two things, you know, increased cost for, for streetlights and then also our gas. Gas and electric for our, our city hall utilities have gone up. So this is a, this is a transfer other, other budgets that are, you know, have available money due to underspending on those to, to basically even out, you know, increase the 2024, 2024 budget, you know, to meet our costs.
Okay, any question, comment?
So this is 2024 budget, so this is money that we've already spent, right?
Misty is here if we want to ask additional question about this. No? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R dash 38 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
And you post, the resolution carries. Thank you. Next one.
I'll move approval, hang on, let me page down. Give me one sec here. Move approval of Resolution R 4225, approving First Amendment license with T-Mobile Central LLC for communication equipment on Tower E.
Second.
Public Works approved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Finance?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
T-Mobile has entered into a license agreement with us to install their cellular antennas and equipment on, on Tower E. We have other, you probably noticed, we have other communication equipment on these towers. When we, we put them in, they were designed to hold telecommunication providers as well as, as city, city communications. This is a, I believe it's, this license, you know, they're extended for 25, 25 years. We, with that longer license, we reduced the escalator from 4% to 3%. The first year on this is roughly 45,000. So I, I believe at last Board of Public Works meeting, kind of determined that the, the lease we get from these telecommunication providers essentially allows us to repaint the towers, you know, when that interval, when that interval comes. I don't know if we specifically set that money aside for that, but if you look at the dollars, dollars we get for that and what it costs to do the tower.
I have a question, why we are going from 15-year to 25-years now?
I'll let Tim, Tim weigh in on that.
T-Mobile was willing to, to go to 25 years. They've been a great tenant since 2010. They did one major upgrade and they really don't bother us throughout the year, don't impact our utilities. You know, they may call us up once, once or twice throughout the year to, to get access, but other than that, they're a great tenant and we had no issue doing a 25-year lease with them because of that.
Okay, I have another question. What is the escalator?
So the, the escalator is the, the lease will increase by 3% every year. So currently, the license has a 4%. Because they're signing a 25-year, they, T-Mobile had requested it be reduced to 3%.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Okay, we are extending the lease and then we're decreasing the fee, so, you know what I mean?
So in comparison of the City of Madison and what they're getting for their leases on their water towers, we're, we're on the high end. We, we are willing to, to keep them as a wireless communication on our tower and keep that revenue in. We, we didn't have an issue reducing that from 4 to 3%.
If you, yeah. If you just take the 1.04, divide by 1.03, raise that to the 25th power, you'll see that there's a 27% difference in, in total revenue. So it's, it's not like it's a factor of two or anything, it's 27%.
Over the 25 years, Bill is.
Correct, the total amount over that time period.
Okay. And Jay?
Yeah, are they gonna, do they currently have any equipment building on site there?
I, I believe so.
Are they going to have to make any modifications to that or make any changes that would require another approval?
As far as I know, there's no upcoming upgrades for their system.
Okay. Any other question, comments? So do we have this type of lease, leases with, in other towers?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good to know. Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R dash 42 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
And you post, the resolution carries. Okay, thank you. Next one.
Next, I move approval of Resolution R 4325, amending 2024 water fund and sewer funds budget, purchase power MMSD charges.
Second.
As amended by city staff, as in your packet.
Second.
You can share your second, you know that?
I'm trying to keep the moving, the meeting moving.
Oh, okay, okay.
Board of Public Works approved, though.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved as amended by staff because we had it in our packet already.
Public Works didn't have this, didn't have this amendment before us.
So we are approving the one from Finance?
That is correct.
Okay.
The, the change was roughly $90, $9,300, you know, for some repaving. That was additional, additional cost that came in there and the, the packet outlines were the, the various different accounts that were getting the money for this.
Okay, so.
From the finance perspective, too, the other reason to get some of this done now is that we're getting ready to start the audit in a couple of weeks. So having any of these final changes to the 2024 budget will be helpful in getting prepared. Hence the, the quick change.
Okay, so is it going to be any additional cost to the resident?
No, the money already exists, it's just moving around in the budget.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of?
You need a roll call on this, Madam Mayor.
Oh, roll calls, yes, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jutser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Bafadar is absent. Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the Board of Public Works?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so next we move to Park Commission.
We, we are not meeting, we haven't had a meeting since last time, but I would tell you, we are, we are moving down the road of getting the Friends of the Park 501 3C created.
Good to know, yeah. Okay, so next we move to the Library Board.
I move approval of Resolution R dash 26 dash 25, amending the 2024 library fund budget utility costs.
Second.
Did the Library Board approve?
Yes.
Finance?
Finance approved.
What is this?
I'll let Wendy pick this one.
Wendy?
Sure. So we, if you remember, installed a new chiller at the library in April and May and we anticipated that we would have a reduction in our monthly bill. We also had a non-functioning solar array until about August and we anticipated that that would further bring down the bill and we were incorrect. So we were overspending the account. Luckily, we've got almost the exact amount of money we needed to move due to a service contract that we thought would be starting in '24, not starting until '25.
Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 26 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
And you post, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
Yes.
Next one. Oh, this is another from the Library Board, okay.
I move approval of Resolution R dash 39 dash 25, accepting GFC copier contract for the library.
Second. Give it to Bill.
Did the Library Board approve?
Yes.
Finance approved.
Okay. Wendy?
So this is just a five-year contract for copiers. We have four copiers at the library, two for the public and two for the staff. We've been with Gordon Flush for, since we've been open. We've been very happy with them. It was getting a little bit pricey and they were able to bring the cost down. We're switching out one of the, the copiers for a smaller model and it's going to bring the cost down almost by half. So right now we're paying a little over 1,900 a month and it'll be just over 1,000. So about $10,000 savings just in the first year.
Okay, good to know. Okay, any question, Jay?
Yeah, Wendy, is this a copier that's used by staff or is this like a public copier that people can pay and make copies?
So two of them are the public can use and they pay to do that and two of them are for the staff.
Hey, Gabriela? Just want to say it's great that we are working with a local business. Gordon Flush is a Pittsburgh company.
Yeah, they've been great.
Yes.
They've been really giving us a.
Okay, any other question? No? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R dash 39 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
And you post, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Wendy, now. Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we move to the Commission of Aging Well. Donald?
Yes, so for tomorrow, we have the Black History Month. We good? Oh, my bad, that's my.
You have a, you have a resolution?
Oh, we do, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My bad, I was going to read that first. We do, we have move approval of Resolution R dash 09 dash 25, amending the 2025 general fund budget, Senior Center LTE Nutrition Assistant.
Second.
Did the Commission of Aging Well approve this?
We did.
And Finance?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
It's really just to continue to have that nutrition assistant position at Aging Well is, with the Senior Center. Individuals really liked having that and I think it was, it was a good addition to something we wanted to continue.
And the funding is coming from, the majority of the funding is coming from donation from the Friends of the Senior Center?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and the rest is, okay.
Yeah, 70% is the Senior Center Friends and then the rest of it is moving around in the Senior Center budget. But it was able to be absorbed into the Senior Center budget.
Okay, any question, comments? None. We need two thirds of the poll for this one, so we need to do a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jutser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Bafadar is absent. Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Anything else from the Aging Well?
Yeah, my bad, I kind of jumped the gun a little bit, my apologies. But I did want to say tomorrow is the Black History Month Lunch and Learn Program.
Oh, yes.
And the title of that is The Stony the Road, a look at Black history with community historians Betty Banks and Pia M. McKinney James. That will take place in the Senior Center Resource Room and that'll start, it'll be at 12, from 12 to 1:00 PM tomorrow. So hopefully individuals can come out and support. I do plan to be there and Ms. Hughes does do these once a month. So I just want to continue to encourage council to come out and support these lunch and learn events. Also, I wanted to share that the Aging Well Commission continues to work on prioritizing who they serve as needs continue to grow, but also recognizing that resources are becoming more limited. So just trying to do the best with what they have and continue to serve as many residents in the City of Pittsburgh as possible.
I just want to add on to what Donald said about the African-American presentation that's going to be on tomorrow. One of the presenters is Pia Kidnig James. She was the first African-American police officer.
Oh, really?
To be on the street. Her family goes way back in the City of Madison. So I talked to her yesterday and there's a lot of history there. So I think it'd be really good. I won't be able to attend because of something else, but it will be recorded.
Okay.
So I had a future date that will be presented out. But it's something I think that's going to be very interesting.
Oh, good to know, yeah. Thank you for sharing.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that concludes the report on Aging Well.
Okay, thank you. Resource Conservation Commission?
We meet next on March 10th and as you and Administrator Brecklin both mentioned, the Sustainability Plan will be on the agenda there. And you had suggested that, that all the council members watch or attend that meeting. I'll also say this is not a small document, so maybe, maybe breeze through it once or twice before that meeting.
Yes, I started reading and it's very, very, yeah, interesting, but also large. Okay, Transportation and Transit Commission?
Yes, we met on February 13th. We reviewed our draft Vision Zero Resolution, taking a, you know, a national template and, and making it specific to Pittsburgh. We reviewed current and future CIP projects. Ross gave us updates on federal funding for various projects that we have in the works. And the current thinking is that any funding that is, that has already been obligated or recommended is quote unquote likely safe and won't be rescinded.
Oh, for the BRT?
Well, I mean, yeah, so funding has been obligated for Sine Road, the Double M, Double M Underpass and our Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, to name a few. Funding has been recommended for BRT. So that is, I think he still categorized it as likely safe, but I think it's not quite as likely. And, you know, the thought being that if that funding dries up or is rescinded, that'll push back the BRT plans by a couple of years. I'm not sure how that estimate was, was, you know.
It was 80/20.
Right, I'm saying though, if, if the funds are rescinded, I'm not sure what would happen in the next two years that would bring it back, so. Ross attends various meetings as part of his obligations. So he attended a meeting with Dane County regarding the Rimrock Road resurfacing that will happen, I believe, in 2026, as well as the Safe Streets For All kickoff meeting and the MPO Tech Advisory Committee. He also told us that there might be a bit of a transit change affecting Route E, which currently comes down west of Pittsburgh along Muirfield Road and hits McKee and comes east only to Maple Grove Road. That may be extended to Fitchrona Road and then down and using the, the roundabout at Nesbit as the southern terminus for Route E. So if that happens, then, yeah, I guess the 75 and/or D2 already hit that area, but I, this, this would, this would bring additional options because it is an all-day service route. So you could get up to the Capitol by heading west and then up along Whitney Way and Regent Street primarily.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Sida?
We are meeting Thursday.
Okay, I just emailed you some of the e-bicycle, you know, data. So, interesting to know. What else? Nicole is now here for the Ag and Rural Affairs. Oh, there's going to be on March 18? Oh, March 26, yes. There's going to be like, what is it, annual members?
There's going to be like, what is it, annual membership or listening session organized by the Ag and Rural Affairs Committee, so I would like you to participate. What time, Chad? I forgot.
I believe it's at 4:30. Deanna, can you confirm?
No, yeah. And where? Deanna?
Yep, I'm right here. It's at 4 o'clock, sorry.
Where?
4 to 6, at Orwin's Farm.
Okay. Great. Okay. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
Our next meeting is on April 1st in the morning.
Okay. EMS Commission?
Yes, we met last week to actually go over Chief Patrick Anderson's evaluation, who is generally positive. He's a real good leader and basically someone is, who is the go-to when it comes to all things EMS. So, that was it.
Okay. Thank you. And next, we move to Healthy Neighborhood Committee.
I'm going to move to re-refer resolution R-196-24 to the Community Equity Committee and to the Healthy Neighborhoods Advisory Committee.
So, we are postponing this?
No, we're re-referring it.
Oh, okay.
With a report backdate of April 8. Yes, sure.
Oh, okay.
Rock and roll. Basically, did we get a second on that?
Yeah.
All right. Basically, we don't, we don't have the revised plan and even if we did, the two committees this was originally sent to haven't reviewed it yet, so this is Chad's way of trying to make sure that when it comes in, it goes right to those committees. So, hopefully, hopefully, that will happen. I mean, the existing draft that we have has a lot of problems, as we've commented here before, so hopefully, the revised version will be better.
And also, I would recommend the council because, you know, that at least review this document because this is an important document, so come to prepare with questions, comments, you know, to the April 8 meeting.
If I may, just to confirm, the council is comfortable with, we would look to do the referral to Community Equity Committee at their April 1 meeting and the Healthy Neighborhoods Advisory Committee at their April 2 meeting.
Okay. Okay. So, it's going to be time to review it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comment question? All those in favor of re-referring resolution R-196-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I have another, I have another thing.
Okay, you want to add? Okay.
Yes, we have a meeting next week and we will be reviewing the applications for the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative. We have 17 applications, so we'll be, we'll be hearing presentations from everybody, which is going to make for a long meeting, but if you're interested in this, you might want to watch that meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Housing Advisory Committee?
We met on April, no, February 10th. Did I already give a summary of this?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. There is a new, there was a presentation was shared from the Medicine Area Community Land Trust.
Yes.
And so, I'm going to, yes, I'm going to share it to the council because it came to my email and I, so no report. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Landmark Preservation Commission?
No report.
Tree Advisory Committee. Nicole is not here. I don't know when is the next meeting. The Ad-Hoc Community and Equity Committee?
Yes. I would just like to let council know that we welcomed a new member to our committee, Dana Pelibon. For those of you who do not know Dana, she's a very perspicacious individual, very astute, a leader in the community and has many accolades and she's a great addition to the Community Equity Committee, Community Equity Committee, and our next meeting will be on March 4, 2025.
Oh, soon. Okay. Next week. Okay.
I learned a new word today.
Always learn.
Can you say that word again?
Which one? Perspicacious?
Yes. What does that mean?
Just, she does her due diligence, her homework, she's astute, she comes prepared and is ready to go.
Thank you for educating us.
Yes, sir. Brother Maldonado.
Okay. So, next, we move to, do we have any, any other commission, committee's report? No.
Personnel? Could I come later?
Yes, later.
Okay. So, next, we move to item nine is Standing Committee's Report and we are going to start with the Finance Committee meeting.
Yes, I will start with the resolutions. I'll move approval of resolution R-35-25, adopting the 2026 to 2035 Capital Improvement Plan CIP schedule.
Second.
Finance approved.
Okay.
This is very similar to previous years. Worth checking out, just so that you know when the dates are. There was one change in that the council schedule in terms of our vote meetings were bumped back earlier, by back, I mean, earlier a little bit, but the staff does not anticipate that would be any, it'll be any issue on their, on their end from getting there, so just make note of that as we move into the season.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comment question? Say none. All those in favor of resolution R-35-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one. Next one, we need two-thirds.
I'll move approval of resolution R-36-25, approving Greenfield and South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plans Budget Amendment.
Second.
Okay.
Finance approved.
Thank you. So...
Do we want to do a summary first or should we do public comment?
We do public comment. Okay, David. Go ahead.
David Hayton, 5855 Woods Edge Road in Pittsburgh. So, I'm against this. Okay, so we've got neighborhood plans in the works, so the only place that I can find any reference to the adoption procedures for neighborhood plans is in the comprehensive plan, which says, "Neighborhood plans adopted by the city are not limited to minor or major amendment procedures. Adoption of new neighborhood plans will become part of Appendix A at the time of the adoption of a neighborhood plan." Interesting. Those adopted neighborhood plans will represent the baseline upon which any regulatory decision is to be evaluated. Amendments to neighborhood plans that are part of Appendix A will be considered an amendment to the comprehensive plan with all other amendments. So, I looked around and it looks like this gets sent to the Plan Commission and the Plan Commission determines whether or not the neighborhood plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's not considered as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So, first of all, the state statutes say that the Plan Commission decides what the process for amending, accepting amendments, considering amendments, planning for amendments, doing studies that support amendments, that's all the responsibility of the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission has, to my knowledge, based on an open records request, never adopted any rules of procedure. Second of all, you have two written opinions say the same thing. It says, the one from Legal Wisconsin Municipalities says, "The information regarding the amendment procedure in the comprehensive plan." It says, "This language does not alter my conclusion. Where state statutes set forth a specific procedure for enacting and amending a comprehensive plan, a municipality cannot modify the statutory procedure by including language inconsistent with that statutory scheme in its plan." So, first of all, there is no written procedure about how this is actually going to get made into the comprehensive plan itself, which begs the question that since the Plan Commission is the one who's supposed to do the planning, why was it removed from the Plan Commission? So, this begs many questions. The council needs to get its power back to have influence in these things and the way to do it is for you to request a legal opinion as to all of these issues. Any single one of you and any single, single city officer may request such a legal opinion. I know that has some hurdles in it, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to put together such a request that just says, "Here's the issues." I'll send it out to all city officers. If any city officer so deems it necessary, you can just sign it and give it to the city attorney and get an opinion and start to address the illegalities that are going on here. The Plan Commission is supposed to be the hub around which all city planning occurs. It's the integrative part that takes the parks plan, transportation plan.
David, your time is up.
Thank you.
So, I want to make a comment here before. We are doing a budgetary amendment here and this, we are not approving the Greenfield and South Stoner Plan at all. They are still in process, so we are making an amendment in the budget that, for the consultant doing the job here. Okay? So, we are not, we don't, the council has not even approved those two neighborhood plans, so they are not even included in the comp plans, so I want to make it, we are doing a budget amendment. That's it.
Yeah, I was going to make the same point. This is a $27,000 increase with MSA, the consultant that we contracted with. There has been some additional expenses due to the extended timeline. The memo from the staff really lays this out in a lot of detail, but in short, the process is taking longer than planned, which obviously creates more staff time for the consultant. There was more meeting prep for some of these meetings than anticipated, given some of the public engagement and also some of the complexities around some utility design and then it's in South Stoner Prairie in particular, and then there was just generally more public engagement than expected, which necessitated more meetings. MSA gave them the best estimate possible to finish out the project, which we expect to finish up possibly as soon as the summer. The total cost for the project with this amendment will come to $305,000. $64,000 of that was contributed by partners and the rest of it is by the city of Pittsburgh. Thanks.
And the increase is $27,000?
Yes, the increase is $27,000.
So, we are approving a $27,000 amendment?
Yes, and it needs a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, okay. David?
I understand it's a budgetary and I want to stay on that topic, but there were certainly, if you saw in the next door posts, there were many issues that were brought to light this, this past week, so when we get to, when we get further down the road, you know, I think we have to have some more. I understand now is not the time, but I just want to make everyone aware of that.
We are going to have a discussion when, I think it's, the neighborhood plans are going to be referred out to several commission and committee when, Chad?
We anticipate the end of April or early May.
May, and then they're going to go through several commission and committee and then it's going to come to council for approval in August. Okay? So, this is the plan. Okay. Jay?
So, it's, I've been to several of these neighborhood plan meetings and it seems to me that the North Stoner Prairie one, we're probably pretty close to being done.
South.
What's that?
South.
South Stoner Prairie?
Yeah. No notes.
What did I say?
Notes.
It's been a long one.
I know.
Long day. It seems that that one's pretty close to being done, that we've got pretty much buy-in from people. The Greenfield one seems like we are miles away from, from being done with and I just question whether this is going to get us there. I mean, how much confidence do we have that this is going to get us to an approval of the Greenfield plan?
I think we started this process in, well, November '23 with these neighborhood plans. It's taken longer than we expected and I agree with you, the longer we extend this, the more costly it's going to be for the city and the city already has, from what I have seen, has done a lot of compromise with the neighbors. They're going to have a couple of more meetings coming to discuss more, but I think the city is, you know, because we need to understand that the neighbors, they don't want anything there, you know what I mean? So, and the city is trying to compromise with the neighbor to say, you know, we need to, the plan is coming forward, you know, we need to have a plan for that area, you know, but I don't think that postponing or making this plan longer, we are going to have the outcome that the neighbors want.
Well, I get that. I totally get that, but I'm also, I'm, I'm concerned about how this is being set up and whether we're just setting ourselves up for failure here, because, I mean, if we get to, if we get to the, whatever is going to be the night the council votes, the night the Plan Commission votes on, on the Greenfield plan and the room is filled with people who are, who are dead set against it, that's not a good, it's not a good way for the city to run a, a planning process like this. I, I've been around for a lot of neighborhood plans and I don't remember this kind of acrimony with anything we've ever done.
No, I've had any meeting with a lot of them, so.
Wasn't there a lot of opposition when you, you know, with the, not Taravessa, but the...
Yeah, Taravessa was insane.
It seemed like you were battling that for a long time.
Well, I wasn't involved with that one. So, I, you know, I can only speak to my personal experience, which has been a number of the neighborhood plans we've done, but I just don't, I, I'm wanting, I want to know if this is the, the end of the line on this? Is this going to get us to a vote? And if it gets voted down, what is our next step?
Those questions, now we are voting for the amendment, those questions are coming later.
Well, no, I think it comes now because if we, if we don't feel confident that we can get to an end to this process, then we shouldn't be approving more money for the Greenfield plan.
Perhaps we should let staff comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think I can try to address your questions. The, we are very close with the draft plan for Greenfield, so what that means is we are well past our preliminary work in terms of bubble diagrams and different land uses. The land use plan that we shared with you all last year, I think our October Committee of the Whole meeting is essentially where we're at. We've gone through the engineering piece, we've met with the DNR on stormwater issues. We are, are quite a ways down the line on this particular neighborhood plan. And just to be clear, we haven't, in this budget amendment, there isn't a significant amount of additional neighborhood meetings, so if that is something that's important to council, you know, staff would need to build in additional meetings. Right now, there's only a steering committee meeting for each of the neighborhood plans and then we would go into our referral process with the different committees and commissions. The goal would be to hit for public hearing with Plan Commission in June and that would set up for a plan, a council public hearing, the first meeting in August. So, that's kind of the timeline that staff has laid out.
And do you feel confident that that's going to get to a satisfactory result?
I feel confident that we have a neighborhood plan that is consistent with our comp plan, that we have made significant accommodations and changes to accommodate and listen to the concerns of the neighborhood. I can't say that you are going to have 100% buy-in from Greenfield.
Any other question? Thank you, Deanna. Comment? All those in favor, oh, two-thirds of the vote. I need a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Aye.
Alder Jutzer.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadar is absent. Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Just one small other update from finance. There was a trudges report for, for, through the end of December, showing all of our investments and how they've matured. If anyone's interested to see where the city assets are at, it's pretty interesting. Those are released, there's a monthly report, they're not always released monthly, it depends on the, but the year-to-date tabulations were not included this month because we're going to wait through, going through the audit process when we're closing out the financials for 2024, so that's coming. The payroll RFP has kicked off, so they're looking at some options for potential switching over to payroll. going to wait through, going through the audit process when we're closing out the financials for 2024. So that's coming. The payroll RFP has kicked off, so they're looking at some options for potential switching over to payroll. There was the, we had to work on a settlement with the other taxing jurisdiction as, as we, you know, paid, we collect all of the taxes and then we pay it out to Dane County and the, the Technical College and the school districts. So that went very well and is complete, and then we're preparing for the audit, which could start in as soon as a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Thank you. So next, we move to Personnel Committee.
Yes, you stole my thunder a little bit with the, the WPPA.
Okay, sorry.
Announcement a little bit, but you already said that we have that, that contract finished. Still working with the fire union, and then our next meeting for the Personnel Committee will be on March 12, 2025, at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Public and Safety and Human Services.
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. So next, we move to New Business, and we have a direct referral. This is for, this is Finance, isn't it?
Senior Center.
Yeah. Ah, Senior Center. Can you do it?
We have one for the senior.
Yeah. Gabriela can do it.
I can, I can do it. I'll move approval of resolution R-5025, approving publishing and printing of monthly Senior Center newsletter to LPI. This has not gone to Finance, so I was hoping somebody else could summarize this.
I've got this one, so. Senior Center Director McConaughey is out of the office this week, so the timing was a little bit unfortunate, but ultimately, this is an opportunity for the city to potentially save some time and personnel costs as it relates to creating the monthly newsletter in the Senior Center. They've located this company, LPI, who's a Wisconsin-based publishing company that publishes newsletters for a number of senior centers in the area and throughout the state. So this is an opportunity for them to engage in a contract with them, and there is no cost to the city, is my recollection.
Any question? Comment? Okay.
They're, they're printing these at no cost? A 12-page newsletter?
Yep, they go out and solicit advertising for that.
I see.
That covers the cost.
Okay.
And that's my apologies on that one, I didn't know that one was, was coming, we didn't talk about that one, but I'm glad Chad had it, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-50-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, thank you. So next, we are under item 12, and it's Alder District reports, and we will start with District 1.
Just a couple of things, we're signing people up for our community garden. Right now, we have a few plots available in Jamestown. We have our bike, with Free Bikes for Kids, our Bikes for Kids event, and it's going to be in New Fountains on April, April 12, that's coming up. We, we're in the process of scheduling a meeting with the developer for the Quarry project. It's either going to be the week of the 17th or the week of the 24th. We'll get, get you updated. And the last thing, our LA Drive Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association, we're, we're looking for people that want to be officers or volunteers. We, the people that have been carrying the load for quite some time, you know, are a little worn out, and we need, kind of need some fresh blood, a few more people to step up and help us with this, this great organization. So if you live in that neighborhood and you're watching, please, please consider, we could use your help.
And also, we need someone for the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative from your district. Okay, see if you can.
Yes.
Okay.
We've asked many people.
I know.
So let's say that publicly, if you live in Belmar, and you would like to be a member of the Healthy Neighborhoods Commission, it's six meetings per year.
No, it's eight.
It's eight, pardon. So my announcement is on March 6, and I know it conflicts with the fire chief reception, but for anybody that's interested, there's Catholic Multicultural Center holds these Culinary Passport events. So this one is Ukraine. It's $50, but it's a, a local meal, and it supports the CMC. And that will be 6 to 8:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. District 2.
I was going to mention the traffic circle, but Chad beat me to it long, long ago during this meeting.
I drove by the other day. When was, oh, yesterday, yesterday was there.
Apparently, there are a few growing pains, so some of the Madison Metro drivers were having a bit of trouble with it, as were some of the normal, normal traffic that goes through the intersection. But growing pains aside, I think that will remedy itself soon enough.
I have a question, how, how strong is that? Because this is like a temporary thing, it's attached to the floor.
Yeah, it's fixed to the car, to the.
Okay, 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 okay.
Yeah, it's not going anywhere.
Okay, okay.
And I'll just mention this morning, Alder's Herbst and, and Allen and I were part of the forum, the candidate forum at the Chambers event.
Yeah.
That's it.
Aldo Leopold received a $20,000 Technology Resource and Enhancement Grant from Green Bay Packers and US Cellular. So that was announced recently and presented during, to students during an assembly. It was, it's a, I guess it's an annual, it's the LEAP for Learning Program, and they get nominations and a panel of judges' reviews, and they chose Aldo Leopold. So congratulations to the school. It's wonderful for our Pittsburgh students and, and all the students that go to Aldo Leopold. Also, in District 2, there is a new restaurant, where the old, up on the top of the Wyndham Hotel, it is called?
Zaffarano.
Zaffarano Restaurante. It is an Italian-Indian fusion restaurant, which sounds really exciting, and these are two, their first Wisconsin restaurant, but they have restaurants in both New Jersey and India. And so really exciting to have a new space that's been absent for quite a long time in that space, so please go ahead and support our newest restaurant. Thanks.
Thank you. District 3.
District 3 has been peaceful.
Really?
It's true.
Okay.
I could stir up some conflict if you'd like, but.
I, I.
Gabriela stole my other, I was going to talk about the, the Leopold thing. But it was, I was there, so I had, I adopted a third grade classroom at Leopold, so I go there on Thursdays and just help the teacher with whatever needs, but I was there after the, it was real cool. They were really excited. There was a former Packers player that was there and kind of got the kids like real hype, so it was fun. In addition to that, I did want to, I met with Jeremy Crosby today, and he wanted me to just stress the fact of like, having the other Alders come in, either monthly or bimonthly or whenever you want, but in addition to these Alders report, reports, just going on Fact TV, and you know, we get the emails that come out, like, I think they, they're weekly, just letting, coming to meet with them for maybe, it took about 10 minutes, and just letting them know like what's going on in your district, if there's any interest in initiatives coming up, or any budgetary things, or anything you want to share with the folks that they may not watch in the meeting, but they can watch the quick thing or the, the highlight that goes out via email. Just encourage us to engage with Fact TV more, and then also just the residents in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. 4.
Nothing to report.
Really?
Really.
4, nothing? It's quiet.
We're kind of in a transition weather right now, and ask residents to keep the storm drains clear.
The what?
Keep the storm, storm drains on their streets clear to prevent flooding. You know, it's really easy, we can get, this transition part of the year, you know, we can get rain, we can get ice, and it's, and it's important we keep those, try to keep them clear so, you know, we don't get flooded intersections.
Yes, and the other thing that I want to mention, because it happened to me today, when I left from the city hall to home, it was dark, and there are a lot of, because it was a nice, well, it's a nice weather, so there is a lot of people walking with the dogs or walking and jogging with a light. So people, you are doing this at night, wear some light, because driver like me can be dangerous.
Oh, my.
No, I think this is something that we mentioned last year too, you know, that, you know, is, especially don't wear like dark clothes, you know, because it's very difficult to, to, to see, you know, you have like maybe like 10 meters or fewer meters to react, you know what I mean, so.
10 meters.
Okay, so that's it. Modern announcement is, we are still accepting, you know, in April, we are going to have a couple of commission and committee that, with some vacancies, and we are accepting, you know, applications, so for residents to apply, so please, if you know people that they are willing to, you know, to serve, and they have the time and the expertise, please invite them to apply, okay?
Can I say one more thing real quick?
Yes.
Sorry. The, tomorrow, Madison College is hosting a soul food dinner that's family and, family and friends friendly. It'll be at 5:30 at the TruX campus, it'll be in D-1630, so that's 1701 Wright Street, and then when you walk right in the main building, D-1630 will be like right there to the right, it's the big like hall right there, so definitely try to go out and support those individuals before we come to Committee of the Whole and just have some food.
Okay, so, so announcement, next committee of the whole is tomorrow, and what are we going to say?
Yeah, so tomorrow, we're going to have a, we only have one item on the agenda, it's a stormwater utility overview. Benjolte, our environmental engineer will be giving an overview, so hopefully that will be instructive. And we are tomorrow at 7:00 PM.
And next common council meeting will be March 11, and.
Move for adjournment.
We adjourned at, what time is? 8:50.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the meeting, the motion carries, thank you.